The second item needing consideration is consider approving a resolution authorizing the submission of a ballot issue at the November 5th, 2024 general election to incur debt without raising taxes for construction of the interchange of the U.S. Interstate 70 and County Road 29. We have Todd Starr, our Mesa County Attorney, here to present. Good morning, Todd.
Thank you. Commissioner Starr, Mesa County Attorney. Before the Board of Resolution authorizing the submission of a ballot issue to the electors in November 2024 for the construction of the 29 Road Interchange, I will note there is a Scrivener's error which will need to be corrected. Exhibit A is labeled ballot question number one, and in fact, it should have been labeled ballot issue number one. So your motion will need to reflect as amended. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Baer, who will address the merits of the proposal.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Pete Baer, Mesa County Administrator. Before you, as County Attorney Starr, is an item to put on the November ballot, the potential bonding for the 29 Road and I-70 interchange, as previously mentioned, an IGA with the city. We've been working with the city for numerous years on looking at this project of this corridor and including many of the things the county has done on 29 Road to help with the loop and the bypass, as mentioned before. So this item again is to place this on the ballot. The couple key components, it's without raising taxes, it's using existing money coming in. We do have to ask to bond for that money. And then the November, the citizens will get to vote on whether or not they believe again that this is good for our community and where to go with it. So, quick history, since the 1950s, this has been looked at. I personally saw drawings in 1957 that showed 29 Road, including the bridge and others, were key components. If you look at a map of the valley, in particular, the width of the river and the railroad and others, 29 Road was a logical choice. Where you look where Fifth Street comes across and 32 Road, 29 Road ties right in and ties Highway 50, which is a regional corridor to Delta Montrose and other areas. In the 1980s, 1981, the voters passed a one cent sales tax. As part of that sales tax, components of 29 Road were listed, not in the ballot measure, of course, but in many of the literature that was used at the time to help the voters decide on whether or not to go there. So 29 Road, again, was shown on that one cent sales tax with a number of other projects. So the 1990s, there were various studies done to look at where, if 29 Road indeed was the proper place to go. And again, they concluded that it was. Then in the 2000s, where we're at now, we continue to work there. And quite honestly, I do know that our land use components have evolved with the thought being that this would ultimately open up some additional land north of I-70, which is non-ag land, which would be good for growth of our community as it continues to grow and move forward. And of course, it ties to our airport. So kind of need for the new interchange. And I want to point a couple of things out here. You can see what's marked as Riverside Parkway. And it goes around to 24 Road, ties to I-70, comes back. And 29 Road itself, from Highway 50 to Patterson Road, has been improved. It was mentioned, and I'll have the cost breakdown a little later, but that's about $205 million worth of improvements the community has already paid for via the city or county. And this last component or piece, which would go from Patterson to the I-70, would be the last piece to tie that loop and make it super efficient for transportation in the valley. It was mentioned a little bit, I'll just touch on this, by greenhouse gases. This actually does reduce greenhouse gases. Instead of sitting in congestion and traffic in other local roads, you'll be able to move around the loop in a much quicker, more efficient made. It proves regional connectivity. I touched on that briefly. It ties I-70 in a better route with a much safer interchange to Highway 50, which serves Delta Montrose, Gunnison on down through the transportation there. It does provide the planned land use in that area has anticipated that there will be some means of getting to that land north of I-70. So, and I do know, a quick study we did, there's over 4,000 private acres up there. There's 3,000 of it's very usable. Some of it's up against the book cliffs, but it's a great area for the community to continue growth in the future. It does extend the longevity of our existing transportation system. I think folks have already seen on Patterson or Ephraim, we're starting to see congestion and other activities going on there that this will help to prevent and move forward on that. So reduce that local street congestion. There's already a lot of planned activities for the community. The new community center at Magic Park up through there, we have a charger school that's growing and providing a lot of benefit to our community. And we are looking at making sure that those businesses and activities can continue on and actually grow in the future. The, again, numerous studies to make sure that what's being proposed will meet our regional traffic demands for many years to come. It was mentioned, should point out, we are trying to apply the latest bike and ped safety improvements. So this is what we consider a multimodal corridors, not just to move vehicles, it's to move all folks and all means. A little bit on the traffic effects, basic of this slide is it will decrease the time spent in congestion, and it will help our roads last longer. And it does increase the ability for folks to get around the community and move forward on that. Activities completed to date, it was mentioned, what we call the PEL, Performance Environmental Linkage Study, was completed in 2021. That's the first step to get CDOT and federal highway approval. Then in our second step, which is known as the 1601 process, which we're about to wrap up here, is the CDOT FHAW did agree that an interchange is needed, and the type of interchange, and we're working with them on the effects on I-70, any mitigation may be necessary as part of that. It was mentioned, we've actually had numerous public meetings, and I can say there's some of the best attended public meetings I've ever seen as a transportation person when I was public works director and other. There seems to be a lot of interest. Usually, you may get eight to 10, 12 people show up at a transportation meeting. Here, we've had over hundreds at pretty much every meeting. And we have identified the improvements that are necessary on 29 Road itself, leading up to the interchange. I should correct a little bit. To my knowledge, the engineers are working very hard to stay within the existing right of way. I believe there's one home that may be looked at, but not a lot of homes. They are working very, very hard to stay in that existing right of way and not have to acquire an additional right of way. The interchange design, one of the reasons we'd like to get this on the ballot at this point in time is that construction costs keep going up, and we all know that. We've seen inflation in our society. It's true in construction also. And by getting to this as soon as we can, and in parallel with getting final FHWA and state approval, that really helps us out in the sense of not having to watch construction costs continue to accelerate on us. As mentioned, the environmental components are completed for the project. The next step, there's a conceptual design completed, and I'll have a quick slide on that. And then the next steps would be to do final design, assuming the voters determine to move forward that this is good for our community to grow. As mentioned, this is just a conceptual design, but it shows the interchange. It also shows the merge lanes and the safety. I can say, they indeed are looking at greenhouse gas emissions. That was mentioned, but that is not true. We are looking at that. That is, the valley does not have to comply to 2030, but we're making this interchange comply now with the greenhouse gas rules and emissions. And we're looking at many mitigation techniques around that, too. So this was mentioned, I'll just remind everybody that 110 million was spent on Riverside Parkway, 17 million on 24 Road, well, 24 Road, actually 25 million, and another 8 million at various phases, 7 million from 29 Road to North Ave, 34 million I-70B at 29 Road, 17 million for the 29 Road Bridge, and 12 million for 29 Road South, the Highway 50. And again, about a total of 205 million, not including interest costs, because some of it was bonded previously, has already been spent by the community. And this last piece to tie that loop together, we think is critical. With that, that's it, with the exception of just putting out, we like to, anytime we do a road report, just remind folks that we have a hotline and a way for us to be reached if they have issues or components or something going on on the road. So, thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Did you want to give folks the road reporter tool spiel?
As far as where to go for the, yeah. So, yeah, this, again, the green signs are Mesa County signs, the blue signs are mean it's the City of Grand Junction, and the major corridors are mostly CDOT. But I'll tell you this, if you call us, it's not us, we will get into the right people.
Yes. And I'll just add, we do have a road reporter tool on our website, and it'll link, you can put in the address of your specific concern area, and it'll tell you who has that road and who to reach out to. So you'll have access to that. And that is live. Thank you, Pete. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any comments at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay, great. Does anyone in the public have any comments at this time? Please come forward and state your name to the record. You'll have three minutes to speak. And if anyone is planning on speaking, you can come up to this front area, make it a little easier. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Curtis Engelhardt, Grand Junction Economic Partnership Executive Director. First, I want to thank you, Board of County Commissioners, for considering the I-70 29 Road interchange project. A lot of the benefits Pete already hit on, so I appreciate that, Pete. But as a community, I think it's important, we have to continue to implement smart growth strategies. And that means we must continue to be proactive in providing the needed infrastructure to support a thriving community. And I believe this project is a great example of a smart growth strategy. A few of those benefits, again, I just think it's important to reiterate, an improved connectivity regionally, ease of access to commercial businesses and employment centers to the west and east along I-70, extends the life of existing transportation systems connecting to I-70, it reduces local street congestion, provides transportation infrastructure needed to accommodate the projected regional traffic demands. And it's also important to note, this project incorporates a multimodal model that will drastically improve bike and pedestrian safety along 29 Road. And this project will open up an enormous commercial and residential development opportunities that will benefit our community for years to come. And again, all without raising taxes. And I also think it's important to note that the GJET Board of Directors met last month on this topic and voted unanimously to support putting this on the November ballot. We believe the return on investment will definitely be substantial. So, once again, thank you, Board of County Commissioners, for your consideration and your vision and your leadership with this. And I'd urge you to put this on the November ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Curtis. Does anyone else have public comment? Please come forward and state your name to the record.
Good morning, Commissioners. Candace Carnahan, President and CEO at the Grand Junction Chamber of Commerce. Many of my comments and thoughts echo Mr. Engelhardt and Mr. Baer. But at the Grand Junction Chamber, we have been dedicated for a long time in supporting, championing our local business community and making sure that we're removing barriers and burdens to ensuring business growth and fostering that vibrant, resilient economy. And as a longtime collaborator in these efforts, as Mishwanki referred to, we've been at the table for a long time to create this loop around our community. We really recognize the critical role that thoughtful planning has in shaping our region's economic future. Transportation is a key component of that mission, and we truly believe that a well-designed corridor, which includes this interchange, allows consumers and patrons to access services and products with ease, and contributes directly to the economic stability of our region, especially as it continues to grow. It's important that we continue to preserve our smaller transportation routes while simultaneously creating larger, more efficient pathways for our community, maintaining the balance and accessibility that businesses need to thrive. In fact, for those who may be concerned about removing traffic from what could be considered congested roadways now, may actually see a benefit for those who are currently avoiding using those pathways and visiting those businesses along those routes once the interchange is complete. As we look to the future, we agree with the Economic Partnership that unlocking that potential along that corridor is limitless. It's a critical piece of infrastructure, but it's also a crucial step to enhancing connectivity and opening the new opportunities for development here in our valley. Our Board of Directors also voted to endorse putting this measure on the ballot, and we applaud the efforts of our county commissioners, the City of Grand Junction, and countless partners over decades who have worked to look to the future and make sure that we do have a thoughtful plan that continues to encourage economic vitality, safety, and success. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Does anyone else in the audience have public comment during this time? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is John Marshall. I serve as President of Colorado Mesa University, and I'm not here to advocate for or against a ballot initiative so much as maybe just to take a look at the big picture of what you all are considering right now, and frankly applaud the city and the county for continuing to partner and think about these big picture infrastructure issues. And if you rewind a few decades, I think many in this community would say today, well, thank goodness, we did the Parkway. What a great project that is. I suspect a few decades from now, people will say, thank goodness, for the Clifton Community Center. And those are things that require time, they require investment, they require vision. And I think we're in a similar spot here, where you've got a lot of key community things converging at one time that can be unlocked by investment and infrastructure and vision over a long time on some of these projects. And so I would just applaud you for the forethought there. I trust the voters will get it right with respect to the substance of the issue. But I do want to just acknowledge that the city, the county, the university, and others, I think, have been working on a whole variety of different projects over time to try and bring our community forward, because I think we are all too painfully familiar in western Colorado. If we don't do it ourselves, it's not going to get done. And so I just want to applaud that kind of ethos that the city and the county are demonstrating in this issue. And also let you know, I think that this project in particular will have benefits, not just for the broader community, for economic development, for transportation, but there are some very specific elements of it that will help advance the university's ability to deliver education in this community. We have a small career technical vocational program that operates off of that 29 Road, and that has been improved by the infrastructure work you all have continued to advance through that entire corridor. And we see this as the natural progression of the project and that vision. So I'd just say thank you for your leadership in this area, and appreciate you thinking about this community over the long term and some of these big, key infrastructure issues.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, President Marshall. Does anyone have public comment on this item? Please come forward and state your name to the record. We'll close the public comment portion and move that on to Commissioners. Commissioners, do you have any comments?
First of all, to the opposition to this ballot initiative, I would say, they've said, the voters haven't really gotten an opportunity to speak. The community hasn't gotten an opportunity to speak. And that's what we're doing right now, is putting it on the ballot so the voters can speak. I'm not afraid of a failed ballot question. It just means the community didn't want it. I think we at least need to ask the community. This has been talked about for decades, as early as the 50s, so 70 years. So I want the voters to have an opportunity to speak on this. We will be open and transparent about everything that we have. I'm already committed to going out into the community and doing this. We've already done that. And it's been overwhelming support so far. Concerns about traffic, concerned about the unintended consequences, no doubt, but we're working through those. But at least want the voters an opportunity to get to talk to this. On the greenhouse gas stuff, if you look at the science, the data, which I'm told we need to focus on, it shows it's going to reduce greenhouse gases. It's going to increase miles traveled and reduce hours on the road. That's your cake and eat it, too. You get to go more places, do more things with your family, and there's going to be less impact to the environment. That's a win for everybody. So especially for our community, who want more time to do what's important in life. And that's what we're giving them is the gift of time. Ultimately, this is a transportation question. Can we improve the transportation system like we've been planning for 50 to 70 years? A benefit to us improving this transportation corridor, which has been called the loop for a long time, because it does, it literally connects a loop. So we want to connect this loop, because not connecting the loop, not finishing the loop, is tantamount to building a house and not connecting its utilities. It just doesn't make sense. It doesn't work effective like it should. It devalues the investment we've made, over $200 million over the last 40 to 50 years on this loop. It also, as an added benefit, opens up 3,000-plus private acres north of the interstate that doesn't have any development right now. It doesn't have any farm ground. One of the biggest pushbacks we get for future development now is you ripping up peach trees, you ripping up cornrows to put in houses, residences, businesses, et cetera. That's not going to happen north of the interstate. It's desert right now. And in some parts, pretty rundown desert, as in like RVs and stuff like that. You throw in some economic development in there, some development from commercial, industrial, residential, you're going to see that north of the interstate improve, increase tax revenue, bring jobs. And listen, is it going to bring possibly low-paying jobs? Possibly. But low-paying jobs is a lot better than no-paying jobs. It's an investment in our future. We need all sorts. And there will bring high-paying jobs as well. This is also an opportunity to renew a conversation about free trade zones around the airport, which, again, would bring even more economic development to the area. Land use categories north of the interstate are business park, industrial, commercial, residential. If this passes, yeah, we need to develop as a community a solid plan for development north of the interstate. So in the end, this is an investment. This is a question of priority of funds. That's what this is. Some say there's an opportunity cost elsewhere, and we have determined that this is worth the investment, that this is a priority we want to spend our money on, because it will bring to our community the gift of time, saved money on gas, spent time on the road. It'll increase future tax revenues, which will help us pay not only for this investment, but future investment into our capital. And yes, investments are, it takes money that could be available now and ties it up for many years. But the dividends pay big in the future, and that's what we're looking for. And I'm full in support of this project. I think it's been a long time coming, and I'm excited to give the voters an opportunity to vote on this. This is not happening because the Commissioners say so, or City Council says so. It's happening because the voters will say so or not.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Commissioner Rowland, do you have any comments?
Sure. Just to point out that this will not increase taxes, but it will complete and finalize that loop of transportation and will reduce traffic congestion. The community has been talking about this, I've joked and said since the early 1980s, which is before Commissioner Davis was born. Today, we hear it's actually been since the 1950s, which is before I was born, which is a really, really long time ago. So I think it's time that we let the voters, let the people decide what they want to do. Back in 2005, the county was really pursuing this, and I asked back then, how long will this process take? And was told with all the studies and everything, about 10 years. And so here we are, 20 years into that. And I think it's time that we finally, I'm glad it's finally nearing completion, but I think it's time we let the community decide what they want. And when we've been talking about this over the last 20 years, it never crossed my mind that the city or county would be required to pay this. It was always in my mind, a federal highway, the federal government should pay for it. We're hearing now that they don't intend to do so. I think we still, we will be going after them for some money. I don't know how much we'll get. But at this point in time, if the community does want this, then the only other option is to bond for it. And again, to address the issue of increased trips, it will actually be a shift in trips, not an increase in trips. And it'll be shifting from local roads to the interstate. They don't have to then backtrack one way or the other to get on I-70, and less time sitting in traffic, reducing local congestion. And then in terms of payment, I want to make sure people know that the county has been paying about 1.2 million a year for the COPs, and those will be paid off in five years. So at that point, we can take that money and put it into this, which will cover half of our portion. So it's not the full two and a half million a year for 30 years. So I'm very much in support of putting this on the ballot and letting the voters decide.
Thank you, Commissioner Rowland. Commissioner Davis, do you have anything else?
I just wanted to add one thing about the bond. Current estimates on the entire project are $85 million, and it has increased a little bit, but that includes 40% contingencies within the project. And that's also not considering us getting any federal grants. CMU, the City of Grand Junction of Mesa County, a few years ago, got a lobbyist, paid for lobbyists jointly, to go out and start procuring these grants. And we were constantly told, you don't have a local funding mechanism, you don't have your environmental linkage study done, you're just not ready. So there is funding out there, and it is our hope with the built-in contingencies and the possibility for federal funding, which there's an example, two examples recently on the Front Range, the Piccadale interchange, and then there's one up in Weld County, both got substantial funding from the federal government for these projects. So we believe we can beat down this project through contingency savings and federal grants. But we want to do it now, because if we wait another 10 or 15 years, this project is probably going to be 600 million instead of 80 million dollars. And we have to put in the language what it could cost us. So if we go out and get a loan today for 80 million dollars, we project that might, at a interest rate of, I believe we have in there estimated at 6%, would be $170 million repayment. That's a bad credit rating, which would get a 6%. We have a much better credit rating than 6%. We are projecting the worst-case scenario. So the absolute worst-case scenario is 80 million with a repayment of 170 million. We believe we can do a lot better, because Mesa County has a good bond rating here. So, again, worst-case scenario versus what we think we can get.
Thank you. You both said it really well. Some of the things that I'll add is more on the agriculture side. On that side of Mesa County, we have gravity. And if you try and put water out there, and it doesn't work, because you need gravity flow. And we can't put water from the river where it's at to go all the way up there. And so that's why it looks the way that it looks. It's just desert. And we have green in our Grand Valley because of our irrigation. And so we just need to be really cognitived of that, where we're putting growth. And this is smart growth, and we want that area to thrive, and it's not going to take up any agricultural land or water. And for me, that is really important. And I think smart growth in this area is going to make our economy better for it. It'll have good-paying jobs, and jobs a job. My 20-year-old is not going to complain about how much he's making. He just wants the opportunity to work. And I think we should be putting smart growth into our economy, into Mesa County. I just want to touch on it. We already have the right of ways. We have the right of way right now to do what we need to do. And there are some options that we can explore, but we already have the right of ways. This isn't going to take up more land on 29 Road, but it will increase public safety around bike lanes and sidewalk and those improvements that are really needed in this area. CDOT will maintain, like they are maintaining it. We are going to pay for the interchange as much as we can. We're hoping to go for those grants, but this is CDOT's road. We'll maintain the 29 Road. The City of Grand Junction will. And I think President Marshall had a really great point that we've seen time and time again. Mesa County, we are an island of sorts, and what we do together is phenomenal. We collaborate and get things done in our community. It's the nature of where we live. We don't have the benefit of having massive, big counties next to us. And it's really up to us, and it's up to the voters, how they want to move this infrastructure project forward. And I'm happy to support this and give them a chance to see what they want their community to look like. And I think they're intelligent enough to understand some of these ramifications. When I look at the overall effects for an actual family, what strikes me and has struck me as I go through this process is when our Patterson Road, North Avenue, when these arteries have heavy traffic, people will go into the neighborhoods and use the neighborhoods instead of being on Patterson or stuck in traffic. And the last thing that I want is those neighborhoods and those families, those young families who have children to be affected, because we didn't plan ahead. And I want those families to feel safe. And we want to move those traffic areas. And we want to move those traffic areas um into where they should be. Um, on Patterson, on North Avenue, and on the interchange. So if we can alleviate um some of that traffic push into our neighborhoods, that's a huge priority for me, and I think the voters um will also see that benefit for them too. And planning ahead um is a great thing that we have in Mesa County. When we don't plan ahead, we get high traffic, and we start to look like the rest of the state, and we don't want that. One of the big benefits of living in Mesa County is you can almost get anywhere in about twenty minutes. Um, so with this, that'll preserve some of that ease of traffic and flow, and I'm fully in support of this um issue, so. I will entertain a motion to approve the item as amended into the record.
Salute it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.